Yes, it's called that. All ours.
If someone is having a get-together and you have about twenty-five cars parked in front of a house, what do you do in case of?
As far as the public health order or the parking or?
Health.
Public health, we will respond to those if, you know, we have a complaint. And our first course of action is to educate. And then, you know, we take it from there. So if it ends up being a situation where enforcement is warranted, needed, the education isn't working, then, you know, we'll go that route. But our first course of action is going to be to try to educate and gain compliance voluntarily.
So you're not really arresting anybody for COVID violations, just education?
Just, yeah, to start, and that's how we've handled it from the beginning with the bars and the restaurants and things like that. And when we do arrest them, it's generally we will order them in. I think, I can only think of one where maybe there was a physical arrest made. But, you know, it's kind of a last resort option for us. But, you know, if we have to get there, we got to get there.
Trustees, I wanted to update you as well as Captain Flag and myself are meeting almost every week. And we're having a staff meeting every week together. And it's a cooperative thing, and it's really working well in the environmental crimes area because we're pulling our staff in to work with their staff, and we're working together very well. So I want to compliment you for, you know, finding time in your busy schedule to meet with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon me, please.
Good evening.
I continue to update the ICS about the governors. We saw today, mostly talked about the schools, they're going to start the sports, and everybody gets tested for each game. Nothing's changed, and we're still only allowed ten people in a meeting like this at the moment. You can always find that also on our Facebook as well. Worked on paying bills. Been to a few county chief meetings again on Zoom. Same way with the RDC, all been done by Zoom. Pleaded and responded to many emails. I had a gentleman over here at sixty-six twenty-eight West Third Street, the Legacy Bar. Went did his inspection the other day. County come in to follow up, and I had to go back. We found some things that weren't right, and we were able to get that taken care of. So he's got five things he has to complete, and I have to go back and finish up. But that should take care of the fireside of that building. Our hose testing was completed. They did fourteen thousand six hundred feet in five hours. Usually takes us about three weeks, three, four weeks with the prisoners. Changed our policy here in the firehouse, and everybody's supposed to be wearing a mask all the time unless you're in your own little work area, then you don't have to have it on. Last week, DC Maggioturf and Mr. Edwards and I, we met here to talk about the CARE Act funds for supplies to be purchased. Wolf sent somebody in for a station tour with a vendor for a quote to sanitize the building. Just so you know, I sanitize this room, the best of it, all the bathrooms, and the main there with our vital oxide in the sprayer. So you guys are in a nice sanitized area right now. Worked on getting some reports from Mr. Wolf and UAN. Received some quotes on the driveway out here on Station Sixty and Fifty-Nine Bay Doors. Still have a couple more outstanding to wait before we bring them back to the group for decision. All the grass has been cut at the stations. Pretty much done here at Station Sixty. We should receive our furniture hopefully sometime tomorrow. The Murphy beds are just about completed. We have one bed that's got a problem with the surrounding. Once we get that completed, then everything in Fifty-Nine for that part is done. Continuing QA, QI. Doing some pricing for CARE Act, we're working on. Protocol testing now is completed, so everybody's passed their written test and their skill sessions. So we'll get there, everybody's good for the next year. We will be doing some continuing education online. They start back up tomorrow, the third. So all crews will be able to sit around and together, you know, with their masks on, doing the education through Premier Health. Shift training is just a normal shift during the shift. Vehicle maintenance, we have all of our crews on Engine Sixty now have brackets holding in place. Repairday warning, light on Engine Sixty as well. Just been doing good. They're about due to get pump tests here shortly too. We installed force load detectors. We had three fire and no EMS public records. Those have been taken care of. They were looking for the fire reports for the couple of fires that we've had, and I made sure those were completed and ready to be sent out, and it's been taken care of. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Good enforcement.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Last couple of weeks, there was probably twenty-four total inspections, eight new violations. Plus, in addition to those eight, there's several high grass violations. I prepared six cases for court, and I dropped those off at the court. And those are all for the Infirmary Road junk cars all along Infirmary there between Third Street and the connector. I dropped those off, I think, one day last week. Can't remember, Thursday, Friday. So I'm still waiting to hear on some of that stuff. I worked on the 2019 weed assessments. That total was a little over fifty-one thousand dollars, and I need approval from the trustees to go forward with that to assess to the taxes. I made new stickers for junk vehicles. Captain, you'll get some of those. I took pictures for the residential beautification award. There was nine properties total. So we'll be handing that out probably the first of September, by the first minute of September. I'll have that all ready. I worked with Adrian. We created a yard sign. That's going to be the, for the winner of the beautification award. It's a, I think it's twenty-seven by eighteen yard sign. Adrian did a great job of designing artwork on there. That'll be given to the person who is voted for the number one. And then I also worked on the letters. For everyone that's nominated for the award, if they're not the winner, they will get a letter stating that they were nominated and acknowledge the work that they do in their yard. And that's all I have. If you guys don't have any questions?
On the assessments and credits, okay, you're not put together a formal resolution. You need approval from trustees to just put that together?
Yes, I just wanted to go forward. I think Steve and I have been working on the resolution.
All in favor of moving forward with the assessments and credits for 2019 and credits for 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? No nays. Okay, so you'll have that ready for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
With parcels and everything?
Yes.
Mr. Calligan's report for zoning.
He was here, by the way. Is he still here?
Yes, I'm here.
The BZA did not meet in July, and was that email, did you cancel the BZA meeting also? Did you cancel the August BZA also?
Yes.
Okay, so the August BZA meeting is canceled as well. There was a zoning certificate issued for fourteen forty-three Blairwood for a shed, a three-hundred Cherokee for accessory structure. Mr. Calligan handled thirty-eight phone calls and twenty-five emails, not including internal emails, attorneys, and county officials. He attended two meetings, one in the office and one online, worked twenty-seven and a half hours. Anything to add to that?
Just things have been slow this summer. I think a lot of it's due to the coronavirus. So I've been limiting my time to about eight hours a week. We have had several phone calls about potential commercial development going on. So if anything concrete forms, I'll let you all know about it. But right now, it's all, we would like to do this, we're looking into this, but nothing concrete.
Okay, and it looks like you've already submitted the meeting cancellation on the webpage.
Yeah, I had, what's his name?
The vendor, Oasis Media.
Patrick Ashen posted on the webpage today. Sent emails to the BZA members, letting them know also.
Good.
Okay?
Anything else?
Nope.
Thanks. All right, road and administration. Mr. Wolf, could you give us the highlights?
Yes, I will. And your package are the department reports from last meeting since I was attending a legal meeting representing the township. I could not be here. The other reports are going to be distributed this week. I want to hit some highlights of what has happened this last two weeks road department-wise. They completed all the right-of-way mowing in the entire township from Diamond Mill and Manning to the very corner of Liskam in the areas that we own or, you know, is in our jurisdiction. They're now starting round two. They'll start over. Now, we've been hampered because the, up till now, we've waited four weeks to receive our, the tractor back from Stanky. Your approval tonight will help us because we have to have a check to be able to go retrieve it. The sheriff's department made a report, but we believe somebody had broken the window on the tractor, so we had to have a window replaced. And the mechanism that runs the mower, someone in the past had used a TIG welder and tried to put teeth onto a spindle, and the teeth broke. And if anyone knows anything about the equipment, you should never, ever go into a product that is made to handle the tenth of the strength of a twist and try to repair it on your own. So that failed the unit. So we, so it's been a-
It's the shaft, right?
It's shaft, right. So it's been a very difficult time for the last two, three weeks because we wanted to start the mowing and starting in the country as we did and start round two. As I've told you trustees, we should try to mow at least three times a year everywhere, and we're working on round two now and getting the tractor back. Hopefully, as soon as the check is cut, we can go get that tractor. The road department has been working very hard with Tony McKee. As part of Tony's responsibility is taking care of the weed lots, the trash lots, and all the lots that have not been touched for years. We have a lot of lots where they have trees in the middle of the front yard the size of my waist. That means somebody did not mow that when the house was empty the last several years. So they're completely cleaning the properties to the best of their abilities. And we will have a whole list for you to drive around soon and look at these properties because they are, they have worked their tail off. We did acquire, or are in process of acquiring, five commercial tags at no cost to the township. So our dump trucks can go through the commercial side at the solid waste district to dump. Up till now, the road department didn't have any of those tags, so they have to wait in line with the miles and miles of personal cars. During COVID, so many people clean their houses out that it's an hour sometimes to get one truck through the system. So we're going to make an improvement on efficiency by having those tags. One thing they have to be aware of, the tire buyback program has been canceled by Montgomery County here in September. And so we're going to have to work with the sheriff's office to make sure that we don't end up with all those tires here. Because a lot of people have taken those tires down there and got their twenty dollars over and over and over again, and it's really been successful on cutting down on the dumping of tires in our township. We're a little worried about what's going to happen between now and when they restart the program next year. The, I'm working with the county engineers. Every year, they have a competitive bidding program for striping of the roads, for crack sealing, and for black topping. Of course, working with the issue two project and the project you did this year, paving, you won't have a black top program next year, or you can't afford it. But the striping, there are a couple of roads that completely the striping has worn off, and that's an unsafe road. So we're, I'm going to be putting together all the roads and streets with the engineer that has been working with me and driving the roads to determine which ones need that address. And then we will go in with your approval to ask for the bid to be done. There's no cost to the bid, and you don't have any requirement to do any of the work at all. Just remember, a few years ago, we had a problem with the different road department where we exceeded a hundred thousand dollar project. And when you do it the county, you have to give the hundred thousand dollars upfront, or they won't do the project. So we'll never go that high. We'll see what you can afford, but we have to put the bid in before the end of October. So I wanted you to know I've been working and driving the roads with the engineers department. Today, I got word for us, Land Bank has a new program that's, that they had kicked off back in about February and March. I made application in favor of the township to see if we could receive any money. And it's a new grant with a partnership with the treasurer's office. We, we applied for money and received seventy-seven thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars in the program. What does this mean? The program is a one-to-one match, meaning you have to match a dollar for every dollar they give you if you want to use the funds, whether you use some of it, half of it, more of it. So I'm investigating, you know, how many homes or structures. You can use this on commercial structures as well. And then what do we have in terms of our funds to be able to maybe match? Now, I will bring up something that I had thought about in the past. This township was awarded well over two hundred thousand dollars as I was arriving here over the two years consecutive from the CDBG, and that was money to tear down buildings as well. I have to ascertain about where that money is because it was never given to the township. It's just a, an award held by the county. We never are to receive that money. If that's available, that might be your one-to-one match. We don't know. So I will report that later. I do have the annual report for the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for whoever would like to read it. Friday, I meet with the Soil and Water District to do a field visit on three sites. One is, they're finishing up the Calumet Tile Project there at Calumet Lane that broke down some time ago. They are doing a study about the hydraulics of the water in that area, and so they've been working with the engineer's office. Once they complete their study, we'll be able to finally go to an RFP, Request for Proposals, to fix that tile along Calumet. Second thing is a drainage issue on North Infirmary. Mr. Mann and I visited a resident on, last year, and we've been back out a couple of times since on North Infirmary Road up around those junkyards. And I want you to know, Roy, that we'll be visiting with Soil and Water on Friday to that resident that you and I met. So the last thing is there's some drainage issues on Olt Road. And so we'll be out on Olt Road looking at those drainage issues from fields and what we need to do. Next meeting, we need to talk about what you want to assess for the lighting district. It's that time of year again to, just like the grass assessments. What do you trustees want to assess to the lighting district members? We don't need a decision today. I'll get some preliminary numbers and send it out to all three of you trustees, and then you can decide what you want to do on a monthly basis, you know, for 2020, or two thousand, 2021, I apologize. If you remember, what you guys did is consolidated the entire thing into one district and equally charged everybody last year. And that resulted in enough revenue to change all your lights to LED. And people like Bruce did a good job coming to our meetings, and in almost every meeting, he was there. He helped us as a committee to form those things. So our lights have all been done, or at least they say they're finished. And then we have our annual program where they're going to go around once a year and check those lights to make sure they're all working. But you have to, in the next meeting, make a decision what you want to assess. Outside of that, I'm always in my office or on the phone or traveling for us. But anybody that wants or needs us, we're there to help them during COVID. We're checking on residents that are, we haven't heard from, from a long time, that normally call us and haven't been able to come to a meeting or whatever. We're making calls as an administration office. So I want, anybody who wants us to check on somebody, we gladly add them to the list. We want to make sure that our residents are okay through this pandemic. That's the end of my report.
Move departments?
Yes.
We have one comment from a citizen, he left.
I did.
Where is he?
I did.
Me standing at the door, you can't see me?
There you are.
Question from Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf, did you see somebody welding the gear on the train?
That's what Stanky told us.
And what kind of welding did he do?
Well, I said TIG, but it may have just been some kind of other welding.
Do you know what TIG stands for?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
Well, I mean, it's a form.
No, I asked you a direct question.
I don't know the exact acronym.
Okay, so, you know, do you know exactly what they're doing to you, or could they be just sending you some mess?
No, they got pictures.
Well, you know, picture can do with it. But anyway, what I'm saying is part of your welding test, and I can speak on this because I'm certified, that's for sure.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Part of your test is to weld the gear and put it back, and they file it down. Weld the shaft. TIG stands for, listen to this, and you might learn something today instead of telling everybody. TIG stands for tungsten inert gas. And that means when you put the gas around you, it'll complete shield. And part of your, that's why they TIG is because that's the purest weld. And when you weld like TIG, the metal is actually stronger than before because you could put in for meanwhile like a seventy S six, a ninety eighth S six, even a hundred S six is much stronger than the gear. So if it, if it broke, how do you know they give you gears to someplace else?
Because there's pictures of before and after, plus the service that was done on the unit. And so, and so there's a warranty, there's a warranty on the tractor, and it was-
Did we have to pay for that?
Yeah, you have to pay for it.
So are you certified to know exactly what you're talking about?
We do under the warranty of the tractor.
Are you certified to know exactly what you're talking about?
There is no certification to determine the warranty.
Okay, so how do you know that sometime we might not be getting, like the butcher puts his thumb on the scale sometime and adding a meat?
But this case, that's not the case.
Okay, so, so you know what work we need to do on the equipment when you send it out?
Yes, because we have a before and an after, and we talked to the manufacturer.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure you're a professional. Thank you. Also, I don't know if it's HR issue, are we getting rid of our fire chief?
I don't discuss.
I don't know if it's HR or not, I'm just asking if it's HR, I can't say anything, but. Just a question.
If you make a comment, this is not necessarily a Q and A, I see. So if you want to make a comment, you got about a minute and a half left.
Okay, well, I got a minute and a half. What about fifteen hundred hour rule? Can you answer that? Or is that HR issue also? Are you going to stay in mute? So you're not going to answer that either? Or are you going to just stand there stupid and don't say nothing? Are you going to say no? Thank you.
That concludes the public comments.
Sorry, man.
Trustee reports. Mr. Mann, do you have anything?
I have some cards from the Census Bureau. There, that information was, everyone had to turn. You either had to do it by computer, or you can mail, they mail you some information, you can fill it out and send it back. But there's going to be a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock, and I have some more information for you. But if you turn everything in as far as we'll be counting, and it's going to make a difference of how much money we will receive in our area. And as you know, zip codes is a part of this that causes a problem. And we are in seventeen, four, five, four, one, sevens, that code is also in Dayton, it's also in Trotterland. So anyway, if you have a neighbor or somebody that has not filled that paperwork out or they need some assistance, we have a van that we can park in a location and have people come to that van. We suggested that for Martin Loop to manage, but there's a coordinator down there that has been filling out the paperwork for the residents that need some assistance. So that's going to happen. The only other thing that I have right now is just continue to wear your mask. A lot of people are not wearing masks. A lot of things happen, there's a lot of parties going on. So just be careful out there. And they predicting quite a few more people are going to die. And it's not a plague. So.
No report for tonight. The gentleman standing back there by the door, identify himself, please.
Martin Hudson.
Okay.
Township president.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mann, I move to adjourn.
Let me ask one more question before we adjourn. Chief, only other employees that you have, how long do you think it'll be before you have the information for them?
As soon as they get the water main brick fixed, we can give them through the process.
Okay, my question then is, he has about five more employees that he's going through the process. The water main breaking, City of Dayton has caused him to delay things of giving these people ran through the system. Is there any way we can give him approval once he runs them through that he can go through the process?
So what are we waiting on in the background or?
Drug screen.
Drug screen.
In the background, because they shut down the whole office.
So are you looking for a conditional approval pending they pass the drug screen?
Yeah.
So nobody starts, nobody goes on the payroll. Basically, you just don't want to wait another meeting?
Right, we'll get everything before we let them start.
Okay. I have no issues. What are you looking to hire? Are they hiring, so?
We're going through the process, we're just kicking past the, this water main brick.
So when would they start once they pass the?
Once we get everything, it's all put in their personnel file, they will schedule within a couple of days to, you know, start their location.
Mr. Wolf, are you okay with that, or should we check with legal?
No, I'm okay with that. I did get a message while we were sitting here that, from the City of Dayton Environmental Services, nine o'clock today should be the last of any water shortage. And so I think our vendors should be open by tomorrow morning. So I would highly recommend you call all five and tell them to call down there.
They're waiting for the call back.
Well, call, call the vendor.
Do you have the meeting to give to the referee tomorrow?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. So I guess we'll move to approve chief's hiring. How many employees, five?
Four to five.
Four to five.
Depends on what they pass.
Yeah. Hire five employees conditioned upon their drug screen and background checks are in order?
And their MBR.
Okay, and license?
Their MBR.
I do ask that- I do ask, I do ask one more thing as Chief, as soon as you do want to make that hire, you send me an email about each of the individuals and then I'll work with Adrian to get the paperwork done.
Yeah.
Okay.
How did you recruit these guys?
Just word about them. They're not on Facebook.
Anything else, Mr. Mann?
No, I didn't do it.
Move to adjourn.
I'll say.
We're joined at 8:04 PM.
Steve. Steve. Something happened.
Oh.
Friend of mine told me.
Yeah, I have.
And he's telling me how horrible things look that I told him though that are, and they're terrible things that they had dug around the most and that everything in the township, well.
I heard just a senior.
I agree on their logic.